Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this session of the Cedar Woolley City Council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll jump right into roll call. I will start with Councilman Owen.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca has asked to be excused. He is traveling, working. Does anybody want to make a motion to excuse him?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent.
Okay, moving on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilman McGoffin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you, motion carries. Onto item E, consent agenda, items one through five. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Well, tonight, we have a special presentation. Here from CIAW is Blair Koch, and he is here to present an award. So, Mr. Koch, if you want to come forward and...
All right, I'm just a little tall, so hopefully everyone can hear me. So, my name is Blair Koch. I'm the Risk Manager for the CIAW, your guys' insurance company. I am here today to present to you guys an award, Risk Management Service Award. It's called the Scott Kellums Award. Scott Kellums is a risk manager that used to work with Clear Risk Solutions. During COVID, he passed away due to cancer. So, he worked for Clear Risk for 18 years as a risk manager. He had a heart for making what we call creating a culture of safety. And so, what we did is when we made this award two years ago after he passed, we decided to name this award after him, after we could talk to his family. This year, we brought for, I brought forth your guys' name, the city of Cedar Woolley, due to the work that you guys have done, Charlie's done with the trainings you guys have brought forth, and the work that Public Works and the rest of your city crews have been doing many, many years ago. I don't know if you guys were all here or not, but seven years, eight to 10 years ago, you guys were well-known for sewer backups. And you guys worked really hard in fixing that. And you have created that culture of fixing things and not being reactive, and you're being proactive. And it's showing. And so, I'd like to present to you guys today the award, so.
Thank you. How would you like us to do this, Blair?
If you guys want to come up here and take a picture?
I know you want a picture of all of us. You want all of us, all of us to come up? Well, Charlie should be in the picture, too. I'm wondering if maybe somebody else would be willing to take the picture.
We get City Council, I always do.
You can just wave or something.
We'll get Charlie and Mayor. Mayor, too.
Yep, just scoot all in.
I know, I'm tall, I can stay anywhere.
You guys got to scoot in.
Good job.
Thank you. Blair?
Yes.
On behalf of the city, we want to thank you for bringing us here.
Yes.
To present this award to us. This is really, it is quite an honor because I don't know that we've ever had an award from CIAW.
Yeah, this is our second year doing it, and you guys are the second city to ever receive it, so.
Anyway, thank you very much. All right. All right. That's always wonderful to do that because it is a lot of cooperation, hard work, and people who are dedicated, especially the citizens, not citizens, but the employees here who are willing to actually work at making this happen. And one of the benefits from the CIAW is that it also lowers our insurance. So, it not only saves us money, the employees' money, but it saves the citizens' money. So, it's well worth, it's well worth our time and effort to do it, and we've got a good team that does that. So, thank you again. Thank you again, Blair. All right, moving on to reports, and we'll start with you. We'll go ahead, Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, Council. Good evening. Just a couple of grant applications that we've received so far in the community development grant. So, I just wanted to provide an update on those. I mentioned this in the weekly update as well. Double Barrel Barbecue and Schaffner Pharmacy both are doing outside landscaping. Schaffner's doing a bigger project on that. Double Barrel's looking at also doing some parking improvements, some striping, some additional lighting, so a whole variety of things to improve the exterior of their building. $10,000 request from each business with a $5,000 match. And the next step of this is to go to a public voting process, so I'm involved in setting that up right now. I just ordered some ballot boxes, and I've talked with the library. And with the Chamber, they're both going to host polling sites for this. And then I'll also be setting one up here at City Hall. And the way it'll work is you get one token per project essentially, and you can put the token in the yes box or the no box for each project. So, when people come and they want to vote, we'll give them two tokens essentially here or at any one of the other voting spots. And they'll be able to cast their vote. So, we'll publicize that just as soon as we're ready to go live, but we're getting close. The stuff's on order and should be just printing some stuff off and delivering it here shortly.
Excellent, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Kestie?
So, the public votes, and then it comes to us, and then we vote. So, the public's vote, and then we do.
That's correct. That's the way that the guidelines were written. That was the discussion at the committee level that we talked about a little bit at Council when we were here. So, yeah, it'll be an advisory vote by the public. It's simply to give you some idea of whether the project is supported or not when it comes to you.
All right, anybody else? All right. Moving on then to, is that it? I don't want to cut you off at, okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Councilman Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to tell Mark that Memorial Park's looking real good. And I go there every morning, and there's always a bunch of little kids out there. So, they're really enjoying that park. And hopefully, it'll stay nice, and we don't get a bunch of graffiti and stuff started, so. But anyway, it's really nice. And the road going down to Ball Street, boy, it's really nice now. I appreciate the job you guys did on that.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on to the crew. I was out there today myself, watching. There was close to a dozen children and four or five mothers out there when I was there about 12:30, so, yeah.
Yeah. They put that second layer of oil on it, is that what it is?
Yeah, it was a slurry seal. We're doing that now on our chip seals just to give them a little more asphalt-y look.
Really put the finish in touches and solidified all that gravel and stuff, so.
You waited a long time for that, so we made sure and put a little extra effort into that.
Well, thank you, thank you for that, Mark. Finally got it done before I get out of office, so I'm happy.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
I was just going to echo Councilman Owen. We went to the park on Sunday with my family, and there was like 40 or 50 kids and all their family there, and everyone was having a really good time. So, thank you guys for all the effort you put into it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. One, getting a ton of positive feedback on Memorial Park, so again, thank you. And pass along the thanks to the crew because it wouldn't have happened without the boots on the ground. So, there's a lot of people involved in that. Second, I'm getting a lot of feedback from constituents on State Street and Ferry Street about speeding again. So, I don't know if you can keep an eye on that. That would be great if there's anything we can do to monitor that with kids going back to school, crossing in and out before and after-school hours, trying to make sure that they're safe. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that we had a strategic planning meeting last week. And one of the things that we had discussed was taking our current council committees are one term. And in one term, you actually only have generally two, maybe three meetings a year, kind of depending on how that falls. And for anybody that's on council in a committee meeting, it really makes it hard to jump in, really understand what's going on and how things are functioning, especially with the Business Development Committee as well as Finance Committee, fully understanding where things are coming from, how they're being used and funded. And so, what, one of the things that I would like to see is those terms move from one- to two-year terms for council members, so they can become more fully involved and see things through and actually accomplish something rather than go through, be introduced to something, maybe have another meeting, and then you basically have an exit meeting by the end of the year. And you've, we've literally accomplished next to nothing. And I really feel like we should be doing something for the city and for the constituents. And so, that, it's my personal opinion in reviewing all of this that that would be beneficial. So, I would like to know if council is interested in that as well, moving from one-year to two-year terms beginning in 2024. Moving forwards, we will have three new council members up here at that point. And so, at that point, each person on council would start a completely new committee, start fresh, and have a two-year term. And so, I would like to know if council is interested in putting that on the docket to talk about at the next council meeting for vote.
So, how about all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Looks like it's a go. Thank you, Councilwoman Diamond.
Wonderful, thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead and echo everyone else in saying that, thank you, Director Freiberger, to you and your staff for the park. It looks fantastic. I've heard nothing but good things.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Wonderful about the park. Thank you so much. And Nathan's on there as well, so thank you to Nathan and his crew. And then I want to invite everybody out this Saturday to the Cedar Woolley Museum. They are hosting an event going over the history of the Skagit Steel. So, that's at 1:00 this Saturday.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
I'm just going to echo everyone else, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank Mark and Nathan and this crew. My grandkids went down the opening day in the morning, rode their bikes. And then, in the afternoon, they had to have mom take them down again. And then, when I saw the Splash Park open, the park was totally, the weather was great, but it was totally full. And I think it's going to be a very good success for Cedar Woolley and the kids.
Very good, thank you.
And their parents.
Thank you. All right, I have four items I'd like to cover. The first is that we did receive the grant for the EV charging station, so those will be moving forward. That's a wonderful thing here for Cedar Woolley, as I think we only have one right now, which is at the library. But these will be located on Metcalf here, right near Cascade Trails, so, yeah. So, the second thing is that Skagit Trail Builders is, they're going to be working on the trails on September 23rd, a week from this coming Saturday. No experience is required or needed, but they just want you to show up and have a good time and help them get the trails built. The third thing is that the, in the meeting that we had tonight, it was the finance and technology, but I think what is really important, that I thought was a good takeaway, was that in looking at the 2024 budget, it is on track. Good news is that the revenues are up and the expenditures are down. And I think that's what everybody wants to hear. I know it makes my heart sing. And the fourth item is Memorial Park, there is a ribbon cutting. It is going to be Thursday, the 21st, at 12:30 on the patio or right near the patio of the community center. Would love to see people come out for that if you would like. We'd love to see you there. And you're absolutely right, it's been well-attended. That park's been well-attended by everybody, which is also a fantastic thing. I don't know if you've had a chance to see that or not, Mark, but yeah, very nice.
Excuse me, Madam, what time was that?
At 12:30 on the 21st, yeah. At the community center, back where the patio's at. Also, I have been sitting on the Legislative Priorities Board. It's AWC that I've been with. I've been appointed to the board. We were looking at priority issues that we are going to ask our legislatures to look at. To be real brief, there's more behind each of these, but the priority issues that we're putting forth, the top four are public safety, infrastructure investment, behavior health, and revised property, the revised property tax cap. Yeah. So, the significant issues are drug possession and fentanyl crises, affordable housing, police officer recruitment and retention, and the last is land use, which has to do with the new requirements set forth, changes made to the GMA by the legislature. And we're going to ask our legislatures to provide, ask them to provide adequate time, technical and financial support for land use and planning requirements. What they're asking us to do in two years is literally impossible for every community. And so, we're going to go to the legislature and ask them to reconsider that, something more reasonable. So, that's a lot, I realize, but that's all I have for tonight.
Mayor Johnson? I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention Councilmember Lavaca has joined us online.
Oh, excellent. Good evening, Councilwoman Lavaca. Do you have anything you'd like to report?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, we had a Finance Committee meeting today, and I wasn't able to chime in, but I did go through the packet. I'm excited to talk more with Kelly about that and just see what we got going on. One of the things that we discussed in the workshop was possibly redoing the, in the future budget to see if we can work back in the Strategic Council fund and start funding that. So, but yeah, I wasn't able to make that. And I hear that it was recorded, so I'll watch the recording and see how it goes. And thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. All right, moving on then to public comment. And we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And because state law prohibits the use of any silly city facility to be used for the purpose of supporting or opposing campaign or ballot propositions, we respectfully request that the public comment, not make references to such matters. So, is there anybody here in the chamber who would like to? Yes, thank you. And if you could give your name and address, that'd be fantastic, thank you.
Hello, I'm Amy Wood. I'm a citizen. I live in Cedar Woolley and work here. I will not provide my address publicly because I do not wish to be hate-crimed. In saying that, I would like to tell you all today that your vision statement as a city is that it's a friendly city, that it's characterized by city government and citizens working together to achieve a prosperous, vibrant, and safe community. The mission statement of Cedar Woolley is to provide services and opportunities which create community where people choose to live, work, and play. Your role as our elected officials is to make sure that any current or new laws serve the needs of the people who live and work here, and that means all of the people that live and work here. Your roles are nonpartisan, and your campaigns and your work should reflect that. Cedar Woolley is made up of all kinds of people. Not all of us feel safe here. The people that live here are voters, and they come from various backgrounds. We have diverse religious views, diverse ethnicities, diverse families, and diverse children. When members of the council make public comments against some of our marginalized populations, particularly marginalized children, we hear you. The family that has two moms or two dads, the family whose home language is not English, the family who doesn't worship the same God as you, you work for them as well. They hear you, and they vote. We need you to be the role models of what this town should be, a safe place for all kinds of people. Hate has no home here.
Amy, I would love to meet and have coffee with you if you'd be willing to do that. If I give you my card, would you be willing to reach out to me since I don't know? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yes? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Dennis O'Neill. I reside at, where do I reside? 107 Telkot Street. My foot's really bothering me, and I really have a hard time concentrating, so I apologize early on. I'd like to compliment the Police Department because they've been on my street twice, once to check out. I've had a prowler for almost three years coming by and ringing the doorbell. And then, since I'm into phone book, he calls me, and then he hangs up before you can get a caller ID on him or anything. But I really appreciate the Police Department having patience with me for almost three years. And, but I would like to see that, since we got all that funding for the Police Department, and I guess they got all of it, didn't they? Anyway, I hope so. But I'd sure like to see the Police Department looking on that, oh, that one, I can't remember what name it is. It's sort of like a community thing on the internet. It seems like there's an awful lot of people have complaints with prowlers and people coming around. They're trying to get a look at. And I'd like to see that more people get cameras that they can utilize when they have a repeat offender like I do that would be set up and stop this because they've made a lot of calls at my house, the Police Department. And one of the things you are trying to do is minimize the cost of the Police Department, some of it, so the money goes further. And I don't understand why the Police Department can't do that with their budget just being approved, well, four years ago, and raising quite a bit of money, why that's not available to the citizens where they could put a deposit, they'd be responsible for it. I don't think those cameras are that much, but it's extremely hard to find anybody that's willing to set those up for people. And it's a shame. So, anyway, I would like to see that addressed. And the information I get at one or two, it's five, about 5:05 in the morning is when this goes on. And for two nights in a row, the first night it went off, and the second night, I saw somebody across the street on the neighbor's lawn. And the police came over, and they're really good about it, but the guy took off. I mean, they let him go because evidently that was his girlfriend or something. But I was sort of wondering how they can confirm that at that time in the morning. But I guess they got, I'm sure they got the name and address and the license plate. But I would really like to see a little bit more proactive. And I think it's because of budget constraints with the Police Department not to come out with those cameras. When you start adding up the cost of these, last night, there was another issue on my street. I'll jump ahead because I might want to run out of time. But the Police Department, again, something woke me up, and I walked to the front door and looked out, and I had two police cars out in front of me for an hour and a half dealing with a civil matter, I think it was. I don't know. But it was reassuring to see them out there and taking the time to calm things down, whatever it was. And so, again, they, kudos to them for doing that. And it's nice to know they can go out and start a car up and come over there without having to worry about it not starting. So, I just jumped ahead a little bit from one subject to the other. But please look ahead to getting those cameras out. You're going to save a lot of money for that Police Department. You might lose a few cameras, but relatively, on a bulk purchase, I'm sure they're not that expensive, given the fact you're going to, your money's going to go further. So, that's all I've got. Thank you for listening. Have a nice evening.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? All right, how about somebody online? Is there anybody online? All right, seeing and hearing none. We will move on to new business. There is no unfinished business at this time. So, moving on to new business, the first issue is the Washington State Recreation and Conservative Office Local Parks Maintenance Grant application. Mr. Freiberger?
Yes. Nathan put this memo together for you, and I'll do my best to talk about that with you. We work with the RCO whenever we're fortunate enough to receive a grant from them to support our parks and recreation operations in the city. A notable one that we have going on right now is Olmsted Park. They're furnishing $500,000 for, towards the re-improvement of that park. This particular program is a new one that actually targets repair and maintenance of facilities within the city. And Nathan's proposing to apply for this grant for $100,000 to basically renovate our wooden structures on the various parks. This would be to re-roof some of them and clean and preserve the materials. And so, RCO has a little bit of a different process. They ask that the city pass a resolution declaring basically our intentions and identifying the signatory persons within the city organization for actually applying for the grant. So, you'll see this again when we actually have a grant together, but this is the first step on that. And we do ask your action tonight to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution 1129-23 defining the authorized representatives for purposes of submitting a Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office grant under the RCO Local Parks Maintenance Program in the amount of $100,000.
All right, thank you, Mark. Is there any questions, comments? Mr. Allen, do you have? No? All right, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 1129-23 to authorize Nathan to pursue the grant.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve and authorize Mayor Johnson to sign Resolution 1129-23 defining authorized representations for purposes of submitting a Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office Grant application under the RCO Local Parks Maintenance Program in the amount of $100,000 for the Parkwood Structures Preservation Project. I'll put it out there just one more time. Any questions, any comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to the annexation, and I believe, Mr. West, that is you. And Mr. West is joining us online.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, call me Hiller, by the way.
All right, thank you, Hiller.
Thank you. The item before you is the last step in implementing the annexation, which the council approved by adopting Resolution 1122-22 last December, following a public hearing. The Skagit County Boundary Review Board has approved the annexation following the state-required 45-day review period. A copy of the approval letter is Exhibit D in the attachments in your packet. A public hearing before the Boundary Review Board was not required by the BRB. So, for review and action, your review and action, an ordinance is attached as Exhibit A. This ordinance has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney. So, again, this is the last step in the annexation process, which began in August of 2022. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Hiller? There appears to be none. And if that is the case, then we are looking for a motion to approve Proposed Ordinance Number 205, or 255-23.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a proposed ordinance number 2055-23.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Owens, to approve Proposed Ordinance Number 2055-23. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Hiller, for your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
You kind of closed the last chapter on that.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are now... All right, so we are now going to move into executive session. Executive session is to discuss with the legal counsel potential litigation. This is under RCW 42.30.110I. So how much time do you think we will need for this?
Nikki, do you have an estimate?
I would say maybe 10 minutes.
All right. Okay, so we will be back in 10 minutes.
Oh, really? He gets a muddy birdie back. He's riding it like this and I thought, pull that over and let me get my X-prints out. Every one of those X-Files was about halfway tight. He sold that bike, it was just. It was just shaking like this, you know. The guy goes, I don't know if you're saying the ready, right? Wheels handlebars, everything was like something was ready for it. For, you know, ready to ride and cracky. Oh, yeah, it was probably the dairy.
Richard Coleman, yes. Coleman, yes, is the city attorney on that? Richard Coleman, I miss Richard, sometimes this name way up the top. That's the one guy.
Who'd ever get for that, that road, why have to fight for it?
Still, that's, this guy's tempering.
Looks pretty good, given the job.
There's other people who told me, I want to be part of my journey.
So there. I read it the other day, it's a big sign. Resto, voters only a mile down the road. I said, I don't need to sit back there and I'll be used to it. Three like that. But I had a boat here for 31 years, times 175 a month.
Executive session will be extended by five minutes.
No. I have, of course, we're, you know, there's somewhat distortion from the glass. We're going to sue you. Why?
Two hours later, this lady showed up with a very big bag of Christie's garbage and a big case of cat food. She was asking everybody, and so I said, put it up there by the front so if you get in there tomorrow morning.
Mobile's be able to install it. Thank you, whatever. Well, they said we can't. The mayor was. No, I didn't.
You're talking about is camera freeze block on telephone poles.
No, that actually would be. Actually, that would be much better if they couldn't fly them. As is now, they might be walking on TV on the face of the camera. Of course, you are not, you're playing, you get it aimed at me while you're recording, you're playing the gun at me.
On the news this morning, they said that Jonas Brothers gave the worst of Wimbo in LA. How we found out, you would teach them. At 17, he ate them, so he was out on two hundred. He got home and hit the, hit the stuff, there was a guy coming in. I'd be doing that doorbell.
That's Robert's.
Doorbell cameras, they'll catch these guys trying to grab their Amazon box up. That one guy just yells, hey. Then she falls down, she breaks her ankle, the guy has to come out of his Mercedes, pull her into the car and the guy's. Well, you know what the best one is? You gotta see him, he did, he did this little white AAA, whatever, small as car is, it's in Minnesota. And he gets so excited, the guy's after him, he backs up in this big snowbank. His witnesses are going, he goes. And then the cops, the guy's still trying. And the guy, right, the guy goes.
I share a conundrum of everything that's going on, which means. I'll watch you even closer. Well, look at the room, I don't know. They also had like drunk.
Executive session will be extended another five minutes.
Don't scratch anything, you don't want anybody to see you scratching. First spending a lot of money down the road. I get up, I'm fine.
Building some clothes a clip here. They have, they have strung way. Let your imagination work. I don't anymore.
So I used to look like, I used to drink.
I'm sure you don't want all this. Oh, but I think we should keep, well, this other business of, you know, creating perpetual.
Well, we're done. I don't know if there are about two million grams of matching fun. Right, the grasses, the grasses, but it's lighter than all the grubs are. Yeah. Because they wanted, put gold one to it. Her water bill, but anyway, the, I said, yeah, I said, I was coffee compared to prescriptions. You get them once a day. 60% coffee, 40% prescriptions. I said, oh, that's neat. I said, you know why I'm taking this prescription? Why? Because of coffee and all, all the donuts. So I asked, here, you know, last month, I had one of those cream cheese names.
Thank you. Okay, it is 6:49 and we are back from executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city attorney to seek a warrant of abatement as discussed in executive session.
All right, do we have a? All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Kessie, seconded by Councilman Burns, to allow the attorney to seek a warrant. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, that takes care of that. That is all we have for tonight. I do want to point out, because this was the discussion at the September 6th, that the Citizens Salary Commission update is in your packet, so you can take a look at that. Next meeting is in two weeks, September 27th at 6:00 PM. Have a good evening, everyone. We are adjourned.